Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. I'm calling to order the public hearing and I'm asking now for a motion to adopt the agenda. In favor? Opposed? Carried. The explanation of the purpose of this public hearing you will find on page one behind the agenda. And, no, that's not what you're going to find there. I'm going to read you the explanation for the public hearing. The public hearing notice you will find on page one. Explanation of purpose. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act in order to consider the following proposed bylaw. District of Chetwind zoning amendment bylaw number 1078, Source Energy. At this public hearing, any person present who believes that his or her interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given the opportunity to be heard on the matters contained in the proposed bylaw. However, it is important that if you speak at this meeting, you will restrict your remarks to the matters contained in the bylaw, and it is my responsibility as chair of this meeting to ensure that all remarks are so restricted. Those of you who wish to speak on the proposed bylaw should, at the appropriate time, direct your address to council by clearly stating your name and address at the microphone. Then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning proposed bylaw. Council may, if it wishes, ask questions. However, the main function of this, of council is to listen to your views. It is not the function of council at the public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individuals. Everyone who deems her or his interest in property to be affected shall be given the opportunity to be heard at this meeting. You are invited to make your views known, and you should not feel discouraged. After this public hearing is concluded, the council may, without further notice, give whatever effect it believes proper to the presentations made at this public hearing. At the front of the room, there is a binder that includes all correspondence received in response to the public hearing notice, which is available for your viewing. And the public hearing notice is on page one behind your agenda. Now, the matter to be discussed is the zoning amendment bylaw number 1078, Source Energy. In your package, you will find the background information, council agenda report dated July 16, relevant sections of existing, of the existing zoning bylaw number 1035, 2016, correspondence received, a letter from the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure dated July 30, 2018 stating, "The ministry has no objections to zoning amendment bylaw number 1078, 2018." There's an email from the applicant answering questions from KLP, an email from the applicant answering questions from Colleen W. It is now public presentation and question period, so if you wish to speak for or against or for anything else on this agenda item, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and speak. The microphone's ready. Not plugged in yet? And speak quite closely with your mouth close to the microphone. Thanks very much. Should come on solid. Hey, beautiful.
Okay, so my first question is, we will need to clear a small area of trees located mainly within, close to the track. At its closest point, the track will be 575 feet from the nearest property line?
Please, your name and address.
Brian Ethea, 4708 Centurion Crescent.
Thank you.
So how far is it now, like, how much are they going to clear for trees? It says we'll be 575 feet from the property line, but where is it right now? Where's the tree line now, like, how many, how much tree footage are they going to clear?
Brian, I think if you have the agenda, the public hearing agenda, it has a map in there.
Oh, yep.
Right.
I've got that, but it doesn't show how, how mu, how many, how much footage they're going to clear.
Okay.
It says 575 feet from the, the track will be 575 feet from the nearest property line. So it will be there, but where is it right now? How mu, it doesn't say how much they're going to clear, how much noise affection is that going to be?
I, I think we can, we can direct that question to the proponent when you are through with your presentation.
I guess my concern as well, it's, it's the company, Source Energy Resort Services. They're going to light industrial, but it says there may not be, or, you know, we don't know what's going to happen later as far as industrial. There's already an AIM warehouse close to the road at the, at the access for vehicles, but there's a whole parallel down there that can be made eventually, and I guess we don't know if that's going to happen later. And there's probably two miles down to this field that is going to be a new rail, basically an oval in red there, that's going to be a new railway. So right now, it's fairly noisy with the sounds of the whistles. I can't see so much with the trains and the brakes, that's, that's not a concern right now, never has been. But the whistles are a concern, some of them, I'm not saying all of them, but the, the duration of the whistles in some of the, the rail conductors has been quite lengthy, and that wakes us up at night. It's been hot, so we've had our windows open all night, but it's noisy, and I guess the noise is a concern. So, you know, where the, where the railway is going to be, the red there in the, in the field back behind us, that's 575 feet, but once the leaves leave, it's even noisier. But the leaves, the trees in the winter actually provide some of the sound barrier as well, so that's why I was asking, how many, how much tree footage are they going to take? Are they going to take 50 feet, or are they going to take 100 feet from the red line towards us and the residential? So that's, that's my concern. I was on the phone with AIL Sound Walls, $20 a square foot. They'll come here, they're based out of Armstrong and Kelowna, and that's my suggestion is, we don't know what's going to happen later. They would send a representative out, and, or you can send pictures, that could be BC or CN Rail or, and/or Source Energy Services, and that's my suggestion is a sound wall. They basically have, they can be reflective or deflective. They can reflect, reflect or deflect, so that's my suggestion is for sound wall to, to go up. Absorbive or deflective styles. Mike, he would come to the site or you send photos. They offer collaborative tech support through all project phases to ensure successful outcomes. We don't know what's going to happen here later, this is, we got an AIM warehouse, it's ready for any type of building from where they are right down to this spot, I would, I would, you know, I don't know what it's, if they can, anybody can ever build there again, but noise seems to be the big thing. So, AIL, AIL Sounds, Sound Walls, easy to ship, cost-effective and erect with minimal equipment and low labor cost requirements, and they're talking $20 a square foot. AIL Sound Walls, they're, have an online website, and he, his cell, I can give you the information, main office is in Armstrong, their home office is in Kelowna. They keep peace in the neighborhoods along busy roadways. They've built Skytrain builds in Vancouver and Toronto for the Skytrain. AIL Sound Walls, they're lightweight, low installation costs and long-term durability. So if we're going to deal with sound and whistles through the night, and with this expansion behind us, or which, whatever's going to happen in the future, they said they would come, they would not build it higher than the trees, of course, we don't want to see a sound wall, and that's our, our issue is we didn't want to see, we, we bought there for a reason, and it's got nice green space back there, and it won't be long till there's more noise there, so, anyway, that's my suggestion. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Actually, I think I will, is the proponent, yes, I think I will call on the proponent at this point to answer for council's benefit, those two questions, trees to be cut and noise of whistles.
So my name is Ray's Abraham, Director of Business Development for Source Energy.
Jordan Rondo, I'm the manager of the plant at Source Energy. I live here in town at 4590 Nicholson Road.
So I can address, both of us will address a few of the questions. So with regard to the frontage of how mu, how much trees are going to be cleared, it'll be roughly 20 to 25 feet from the track, so that will mean, from the clearance section of the tree, trees, it'll be roughly 550 feet. Now, if you go further east, you'll, you know, compare, that distance compared to some of the houses further east, that's much shorter, around 400 feet. And I'll pass it on to Jordan with regard to the train noise and, and effects.
With any of the bumping, grinding, anything like that, you won't get that from us, because all our track is meant for is a holding facility. The cars will be placed there, and the only time they'll be moved is when we go to pull out, say, 17 or so. And as for the beating of the horns, we have a small unit train, they're a small engine, and it doesn't make much noise, it's one small tube basically that gets maybe just outside the yard. You really don't hear it, even if one guy's down at the end of our yard, all the way at the other end, you can barely hear it. So in regards to that, you wouldn't really need a barrier, and even in the winter, I couldn't see it.
Thank you very much.
Would you like me to give kind of a description of why we're building this track, what the use will be for?
I think we're going to entertain the comments from the, your questions from the residents first.
Sure. I can address one other item with regard to the property. We're not going to be letting any other companies come onto this property and operate, it's solely for our use, so there won't be any usage of the lands further south. And all the operations, for our operations, happen north of the building, our storage facility, which is, there's a rail pit north of the existing storage facility. This track is solely going to hold the rail cars, so we're going to bring in the full rail, set of rail cars, and then unload as they go past the storage facility.
Anyone, anyone further wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Marty McDonald, I live at 4312 47th Avenue. Before I address the points that I came here to talk about, looking over their proposal, there is nothing in light industrial that allows rail car movement. This seems like a segue towards heavy industrial. I would be looking for them to admit or reassure us that they would not be looking in the future to rezone this area to heavy industrial once we've accepted light industrial. After that, I would invite the council to go to their facility and watch them load and unload the cars, to have them address the dust issues that is the main concern with handling frac sand. Their facility has a berm running behind it that appears to be completely full of the frac sand that they were not able to control from their storage facility, and they've simply piled it up in the back. I'd like to hand you guys MSDS sheets from this type of material, so you can see exactly the dangers of dealing with this type of material. The dangers consist of silicosis, lung cancer, tuberculosis, autoimmune system disease, as well as nephrotoxicity. I would like assurances that this dust will not arrive in our neighborhoods to poison us. Thank you. Would you like copies of this MSDS? Have you guys been provided copies?
Thanks for the questions, and certainly can answer these questions. It was never our intention to apply for heavy industrial initially. We were told by town that that was required of us, and all of our other facilities, we are strictly light industrial, and we will, are more than willing to sign whatever documentation you require that prevents us from ever zoning this heavy industrial for our operations. Light industrial entails cartage, which is why we fall under that section. With regard to piled up sand, so our customers are very particular about the product that we bring in. When they, they call contaminated sand if it has pebbles or rocks in it, or if there's any moisture. If that is the case, our customers bring back the sand. So the sand that you see piled up isn't excess dust or anything with regards to the sand in our buildings, it's returned sand that we've piled there, and then every so often we take that sand and haul it off-site. Or, oh, sorry.
Excuse me, I, I just want to interrupt you for a moment.
Yeah.
Please direct your comments to council.
Oh, sorry, sorry. So the piled up sand, we do either take it off-site or sell it to customers in the, in the area that may choose to use it. With regard to the MSDS, that is the exact same MSDS form for play sand or beach sand. They all say, say that there's risk of silicosis for gravel, dust on roads, beach sand or play sand. If you look at the MSDS for Quick Creeds play sand that they sell at most home hardware stores, it is the exact same MSDS, we have the exact same chemical compound. The difference between our sand and local sand or play sand or beach sand arises because our product just has a more uniformly round grain of sand. We mine this sand in Wisconsin, we wash the sand, we dry it, and then we sort it by grain size, absolutely no chemicals added. It is a completely natural product. Of course, if there's very fine particles and you inhale it, there can be issues, same with, same goes for beach sand or any other type of sand. But of course, we follow stateside, province, province-wide, and federally, all required health and safety requirements of us. Thank you.
Do we have further comments from residents?
Hi, my name's Fabian DeGilmester, I live at 4700 Centurion Crescent. My biggest concern is like Brian Ethea, my neighbor, said, increased noise. As I have noticed over the last two years, especially this year for some reason, is there is so much activity in the rail yard. Like, we listen to that thing 20, 30 times a day. Sometimes the duration of the horn can be like, they'll toot six, seven, eight times, and I think regulation is for it, and I know that's not a part of the topic, but I'm just wondering, like, you know, is this increased activity going to go that way? Is it going to be more noise with CN, or, you know, can, can they not find some way to make peace with the neighborhood, if you want to say it that way? Because, you know, I'm thinking further down the line, like, okay, what if I want to sell my places? The property, is, is it going to drop value because there's so much noise? I'm showing someone my, my, hey, look at, I got a nice house, you want to buy it? Yeah, but what about this horn thing going on and this, all these trains, ra, ra, ra? To me, that's the biggest concerns, the noise, and like, you know, Brian said, we listen to it so much, I can't even open my windows at night. I won't get no sleep. Anyway, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that question. With regard to the noise, that noise is primarily caused on CN's yard. Jordan can give further explanation as to the effects.
Yeah, we can't really speak for the horn.
Please direct your, your comments to council.
We can't really speak for CN itself and the regulations. I know, I do have some friends within the industry, and they have altered that over the last few years due to accidents and such at crossings, but we can't necessarily say as for our facility, we won't have any more extra noise or banging claim, and like I said, our horn isn't going to have any issues. It's just primarily holding the cars on that track, and when we pull them out, our engine does not make enough noise. You can hear CN well over top of ours before you'll notice it.
I'm Arteth Brownlee, I live at 4518 McDonough Road. Our back property borders onto this piece of property that you're talking about, but the crossing down to our farm is at mile one. Trust me, we get the horns as well, every time they go back and forth. But having lived above the railway station at BCR many years ago, I can tell you, it's the switching back and forth, moving cars around, baking up trains that makes the noise. What they're doing here is providing a storage, well, or a side, side track that they can park their, their cars in, so that they're not switching them back and forth to be out of the way of the CN rail line. You're going to have less noise than what you're having right now. And as far as the horns at all the main crossings, God forbid they ever quit. You won't hear them coming.
Anything further?
Alec Brownlee, 50th Street, I don't remember the house number, I'll give it to you later. I spoke last time, last month about this with no access to my property through BC, BC Rail, but apparently I'm not the only one with that problem. I believe the proponent has the same problem, and so that, I believe, lands on our doorstep to get some legal access even to the piece of property that we're speaking of right now. They don't have legal access. They had to battle with CN Rail to get it, and somebody's told me that, well, I need to do something to it while I'm doing it right now. This is what I'm doing, is trying to get legal access. And now I understand, they also need, they were, I believe they spoke to the district about it, and they were, said, well, the legal access would be through the Crown Sub. Well, of course, that's not going to fly, they're going to go berserk on us. So I think we need to sit down and look at, sorry, the district needs to sit down and look at how they can get access, legal access into all that property back in there, so that when there is, if we do want to build a subdivision, because I believe ours was residential at one point, how do you get residential, how are we going to, how are the, how is the district going to get more taxes out of that area? Because I can tell you, I don't pay very much taxes in there right now, and I believe our access route through there would be an asset to the proponent as well, so, anyway,
I am going to call three more times for anyone who wishes to speak. For the first time, does anyone wish to make any further presentation on this matter? Just a minute, we have someone.
I guess I was guilty for not knowing what this, this business was for, silica dust, but that gentleman said that in, if it can be breathed, it can be harmful. So I, that's in a toy box, in a sandbox, but we're not dealing with a sandbox here, we're dealing with rail cars, and there's going to be millions of tons of this, and when I heard it, if it can be breathed, it can be an issue. With the trees being removed, winter time, no leaves, that stuff can blow right up back into our houses, and it ain't just a sandbox. They're probably, with the money they're spending, they probably want to have this in service for quite a few years, so how many years of silica dust we're going to be blowing up from the southwest, or from the south, this would be the southeast, blowing right up into our backyards? So I, you know, it's nice to be a friendly community and allow new taxes and revenue and, and business, but we really have to look at our health, and possibly a new location for this. I'm not shutting it down, but I think they, they could look at more options of putting this in another location. They're putting it, there's other businesses that have put their businesses in our town that maybe, maybe shouldn't have been there event, originally, and this was, I think this is one of them. If we allow it now, we're not learning from what we learned, we should have learned before. So I think there may be another location they can look at to put this, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
So I'd like to clarify, so when I said breathing in particles, I meant breathing in fine particles, and as in snorting it up in your nose and lungs. I will first say that we are not a new business, we've been operating the exact same way for the past eight years. All of our product comes in sealed rail cars. It is transported into our facilities via covered conveyors through a rail pit. None of our product can ever be exposed to the elements. If that happens, our customers return it immediately. If there's any moisture content or any change in the product, it gets returned to us. So absolutely, this does not get exposed to the air, it is not blowing around, it has not blown around for the past eight years, it will not all of a sudden start blowing Yeah, and with regard to the actual inhaling of the chemical or product or sand, all of our operations, whether it be in Wisconsin, all the way through the logistics chain up to our terminals, we follow every and every possible health and safety requirement. We are inspected regularly by all the required agencies and are not at fault at all. We ensure proper safety for all of our employees working in the storage facility and out, and we have never had any issues with regard to that, and we continue to operate in a very safe and health-centered approach.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is your procedure to handle returned product?
Jordan?
There's one of two ways that it happens. If it comes back in, in the rail car, and pending on how it is, we can recycle it and bring it back up to company standard by putting it back into one of the silos. There are times where it does come back contaminated, and then essentially we have to lay it out on the ground right by our cleanout, and then we filter it through. Or from there, if it is too contaminated, we ship it straight off away from the area.
Would you explain for me, what do you mean by contaminated?
Contaminated is if there's any pebbles or other rocks in the sand.
Thank you.
I have a question too. In your opinion, will the, would this loop increase the switching? I'm not sure how you switch now, would it, would it make, because like somebody mentioned, it's a switching that makes a lot of noise. Will this decrease the switching or increase the switching or?
Sure, certainly it'll, it'll decrease the switching. So right now, we have CN service, our rail car spot is for seventeen rail cars, we can have six switches per week. In effect, if we are able to bring in a unit train, which is what this track can hold, roughly hundred rail cars, they'll bring in one hundred loaded rail cars, and as the rail cars are emptied, CN will come and pick them up. There won't be any additional switching going on. The switching will come in instead of every, once every six days, or once, six days a week, it'll be once every ten days, pending on the jobs. It could even be, we might have a small job, so we won't even be switched, be switched out for up to close to three quarters of a month, if not a month. So our facility won't, will diminish a lot of their switching out the yard.
I have a question, Your Bishop. I have a question.
Who's asking?
The loaded, the loaded cars that are gonna be on the loop, what do they look like? They've got the sand in them, and then what?
Just the standard rail cars, they're completely sealed on top. There's, any other? They look essentially like one of the grain cars you see coming through, them great big round ones with the dual, the triple, the quadruple hoppers on the bottom. And each one of them hoppers is sealed, and then they are sealed and locked on top with our own clips, so that if they are opened up or anything like that, we will notice in a heartbeat. And then there's an investigation from there finding out as to why.
So there's no chance of dust escaping top or bottom?
No.
Thank you very much. I am going to start that closed down process again, for the first time. Is there anyone who wishes to make any further statement on this matter?
I'd like to get more than one. Hold, wait, hold first. In regards to their contaminated material that you guys are spreading outside of your storage facility, I'd like to know how that complies with your storage and handling requirements of this material. I'm aware that it is what your frac and sand is, I've worked with it myself. I'm also aware that this is the most windy community, one of them in the province. So, when you spread it outside of your facility, next to my house, that wind picks up, and the light dust is transferred over. As he has indicated, the trees provide some sort of filtration. But my concern is a hundred rail cars, every ten days, loading and unloading, and I was there last night while you loaded a car. It may have covered conveyors, they may be covered cars, but the hopper going in is spewing dust the entire time. Watch them unload, it'll spew dust as well. I truly invite this council to watch them practice their procedures, and ensure that this dust suppression system is adequate for what we need with this amount of frequency and volume of material. Thank you.
So I'd like to reiterate that our product is a completely natural product, absolutely zero chemicals are added to the product that we bring to our sites. Nothing is added. When Oil and Gas Company chooses to frac us, up frac a well, they do mix our product with water and other chemicals. But the sand that we bring is completely natural, untreated, no chemicals whatsoever. And as for the dust, we don't load rail cars, we unload them, and the particulate doesn't fly into the air as far as one might think. You can, anybody here can adjust to the dust that comes up from Canfor in the middle of town. Our facility, you don't even see an eighth of that. It doesn't get into the air, nearly as bad as the particulated dust that you get from anywhere else. It settles really quick, and as for the leaves falling in the winter, the snow is covering it, it's all wet. It doesn't move, doesn't go anywhere. And as for the summertime, yes, we do get some dust, but it's same thing you get on the roads when they gravel them, if you're out heading out jackfish or anywhere like that. And I can say that I imagine everybody's been out in them areas.
So yet again, I hear a second time that this silica dust can be an issue when you breathe it. With a hundred rail cars, how many is it gonna take to get a derailment? You always hear, the more activity, the more chances of things happening. So if there's a derailment, those hoppers will probably break their car seals, and they're gonna get silica dust, or this dust on the ground. The wind is, I don't know if these gentlemen have lived here, but they don't know the wind that can happen here. If that blows on the ground, it's gonna blow up into our backyard, and what are they gonna do then? Are they gonna do compensation then? Like, I think we should really look at this before we, we built this, and really look at an alternative spot. Because this isn't the right spot. And that's, that dust, again, was said it's harmful if you breathe it. It's not a toy box of seven by seven feet. There's tons of this dust, and I'm glad a gentleman brought the MSDS to let us know what's happening here, because I think we'd be blind if we, if we didn't have that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is this something new?
We can just quickly respond.
If there's a new?
Would, as it comes to the derailment issue, we have to go through extensive training every three years on so many different levels, plus medicals, every year, the whole nine yards. There is a very low chance of derailment on our facility, as our tracks have to be checked once a month by a licensed track inspector. And we have documentation for that onsite at all times, as per BCA Technical Safety and Transportation Canada. And as we were onsite with council today, there was plenty of dust coming up from the roads. Breathing that in was a lot more than you'd see, you'd see more dust flying from the roads than you saw from any sand piles near our facility.
Okay, I'm going to go through the closing process. We've had, we've had two runs at this. For the first time, is anyone, is there any further comment? For the second time, is there anyone who wishes to make any further representation? And for the third time, is anyone who wishes to make any further representation? Thank you very much for the comments, you've been very informative to council, and we do appreciate them. This meeting is adjourned.
And we'll go up further, is, just up the hill here is where my grandma Marceline lived, where I lived and was raised. I'm trying to figure out today, I think we moved here in 1960. Everybody, we squatted up here, nobody owned their properties. My grandma worked very hard raising four of us, after she raised all her nine kids, and then, then she adopted four of us grandchildren. My grandma, for extra dollars, she used to make hides every day. All my life, I could remember her making hides, as you can see on the one video. This is what she did for extra dollars.
Well, I don't know as it is, really a band, but we just get together and play together. So anytime when people would come over to visit, we would just pull out the instruments and start playing. Dad would be on the fiddle, Joanne Levine, Joanne on the piano, Levine on the guitar. I was usually pretty small then. So anyway, Clem, he learned to play the piano, and, well, he plays lots of things. Yeah, no, whenever we get together, it's just always been music. There's nothing like music. Life wouldn't be the same without music.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am calling to order the council meeting for August 13. Please rise for the opening statement.
As we begin our meeting this evening, we reflect on the service we provide to our citizens, and we will endeavor to conduct our business effectively and productively on their behouse. Thank you.
I would like a motion to adopt the agenda with the notation that we have RA9 National Disaster Mitigation Program. Application for funding. Some move?
Second.
Favor? Opposed? Carried. And the minutes of July 16. So move. Any discussion on the minutes? In favor? Opposed? Carried. No delegations, moving into bylaws. B1, District of Chetwick Zoning Amendment Bylaw, number 1078, Source Energy. Yes.
Are you looking for a motion?
I am waiting for.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion for, what is it, third reading?
We have a motion.
I would second.
Discussion.
I have a question. So this is the third reading, we still have the final reading?
We do.
Okay. Um, no, I, I'm, okay, no, I really don't have anything else.
Johnson, Dick?
I have a couple of questions. The type of trees that are going to be left in, in the green space, and just have a good physical look at it. I'd like to see what's actually gonna be left there, and prevailing winds in, in that area. Other than that, that's it.
So I have, it seems to me that, that the improvements that the company is requesting will not see any more activity, that is, no more cars being dumped than are presently being dumped? Am I correct in understanding it that way?
I believe that, I think the proponent is still here, but I believe there is an increase in the cars, because they are, well, they're enabling their cars to loop instead of just going there and backing back up. But it is an expansion to their business. At one point, they did say that they were able to hire a couple more people after this expansion has gone through. However, council is within the right to ask if they wanted maybe a dust abatement program?
I'm sorry?
If council wanted to ask the proponent for a dust abatement program, for instance, for the piles of sand that they are recycling, that wouldn't be unreasonable?
Uh huh. The word loop has been used a number of times. I don't, as I understand, it's not a loop. The train cars will come in from the north and be parked there, and then they'll be pulled back north as they're required. Yes. So there's no through traffic on that, on that spur?
I have a question, Your Bishop. Over here.
Yes, go ahead.
So I guess I just had some concerns, and a gentleman in the audience brought it up, that our zoning for light industrial M1, I don't actually see rail or track movement on that. So I would like to know for clarification, where that falls in under the light industrial?
It's cartage that's defined as rail movement.
Movement of goods.
Pardon me?
Yeah, okay, I'm hearing that it's cartage or movement of goods, puts it under light industrial.
So, but it doesn't actually say train or track, it just says truck terminals and packing and creating?
It's a terminal, yes.
Okay. I guess I just have a comment. When we went down there this afternoon, I think I realized that I don't see a lot of trees that are gonna be gone. I mean, they are gonna take a few of them out of there, but I think it's still far enough away from the Crown Sub. I don't think they're gonna notice any difference, I really don't.
I think also a point of clarification too, I think that the area that is of most concern is already zoned light industrial, is that not correct?
That's true. The proponent already owns the property that's closest to the Crown Sub, and it's already zoned light industrial.
Right. Would it be possible to get a little bit more information about this product on our own before the final reading?
Absolutely.
I mean, that's, that's a good request, yes. See, my understanding now is it's sand, the sand you'd encounter when you're under the beach. But, yes, if you can get, get, do some research on that before our final reading.
Sure. And that would be classified as clarification, not new information, because we've already received some information on that.
Yeah. Anything further? So the motion is to approve the third reading. In favor? Opposed? Let's get that again. In favor of third reading? And opposed? Carries. B2, District of Chetwick Council Remuneration and Expense Bylaw requires first, second, and third readings.
Motion to move for second and third.
Second.
Any comments on this?
Yeah, I just-
Yeah, I just, I think it's too much, too quickly. I get why the district wanted to do it, in that the tax law changes and all the rest of it, but I can't be in favor, I just think it's too, if it was phased in over a number of years, I think it would be more palatable, but all at once, it's not going to work for me.
So I have a comment to that.
Yes, you may.
I think one thing we ought to remember is that we're not doing it for us. It doesn't take effect until January, so this will be for the council coming in, and we all been there. We know that we're not, as new council, we would never ask or put a raise in for ourselves, because we know how that looks. So going forward, I think this is for, and with the tax law, this really, I think, just gives us back what we're getting now.
I have a comment.
Yes, you do.
I'm against this one, too. I think we're fairly compensated for our work. We've streamlined things a lot over the last four years, and there's fewer meetings, so again, I think that we're fairly compensated fairly well, and I think that we're in line with what other communities are offering their elected officials. And I don't think that the tax laws are on the burden, the change in the tax laws, I don't think that they're on the burden of the citizens of Chetwind.
I believe we're fairly compensated as well, but we'll be going backwards if we, whoever's going to be elected will be going backwards from what we're at now.
But that being said, too, we still get the cost of living increase every year of 2%.
Just commenting on the remuneration for the office of mayor. This, putting it to $38,000 will, as Councilor Deck said, keep us at par with where we are now. I'm not sure even what the mayor gets now, but can you help me somehow?
Sure. I'm sure Director of Finance knows.
I don't know the exact number right now, but I believe it's around 34.
Okay. So putting it to 38 will absorb the tax hit that the federal government is imposing beginning next year, beginning in January. Yes. Any further?
Go ahead, Ernest.
I'm just wondering, for the sake of everyone here, could somebody explain the tax hit or what's going on there?
I think that would be best done by a finance man, because I don't even know what I'm getting.
Okay. Effective January 1st, the federal government has changed the tax laws related to public bodies that include councils and school boards and those kind of things, elected people who serve on those boards. Currently, there is a one-third of what councils receive is considered to be a tax-free in lieu of expenses and those kind of issues that they have on a regular basis. And beginning in January, that one-third exemption will no longer be in existence. It will be all fully taxable, so that's what this is relating to, is to increase the remuneration to compensate for the lost out-of-pocket money basically related to the taxes.
Further comments?
No, actually, the question I was going to ask, if we could explain what the tax changes were.
Oh, I see. Thank you. No further questions? I'm going to call for the vote. In favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to committee reports. Regional District Report. I thought I... I turned it in late. No, it's not here. Let's see, I don't have the paper, so let me remember. Actually, there was not a whole lot of interest in the last regional district, in particular interest in Chetwind, with the exception that the outdoor exercise sports equipment that is presently situated at the regional district behind the regional district building is going to be moved to Spirit, not Spirit Park, but Dauntitis Park. So the regional district owns that equipment, and I'm not sure if it's a donation to Chetwind, but anyway, it's going to be relocated to Chetwind's Dauntitis Park. It belongs to the regional district, and it's located behind, out of sight, nobody uses it. Oh, come on, you must. Why do you think we're bringing it here? Any councilor reports? There is a mayor's report. I move my report. Are there any questions?
Sorry that you rolled your quad.
What was that?
Sorry that you rolled your quad.
Did you have your helmet on?
Come on. I tell you something, though. I've learned, even in my late sunset years, never stand up and lean over to look forward when you have it in reverse. Never, never, never. You trash a lot of equipment doing that. Do we have an administrative, oh, do we have a second on my report?
I'll second that.
I just wanted to check if you read it, too.
I know you do that.
Yes.
Testing us.
Test, it was a test. In favor? Opposed? Carried. Administrative report? Nothing on that, okay. Moving on, then, to correspondence.
C4.
C4. Okay, then, a move to receive C1, 2, and 3, and 5 through 5 and 6. So...
Second.
Favor? Opposed? Carried. C4.
Do we have somebody signed up to take this training?
I don't believe we have at this point, but it is a really good opportunity.
Can we move forward with it?
Absolutely.
Okay. You want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I would second it.
Discussion on the motion to move forward with the training proposed by FCM? In favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to RA1, two. No, RA1, Temporary Use Permit, and we have an opportunity for public input. Do I have some paper on that?
No, we don't have anything, if you just would like to ask people if they have any opinions on it?
Right, so this is not a formal public hearing, but if you have some comments to make with respect to the application for a development variance permit, oh, wait, wait, still, I'm missing it. Temporary Use Permit, Cereris Murphy Joint Venture. It's your time now to make a presentation. State your name and address if you wish to speak.
Matt Dolke, 4096.
Matt?
Third Avenue.
Excuse me, you, maybe I confused you, but we are on...
Can't hear you.
Cereris Murphy.
Oh, not me.
You're next. If we have no one to speak on Cereris Murphy, a motion is in order.
I'd make that recommendation that we authorize an issuance of Temporary Use Permit, number 01288 to Cereris Murphy JV, for the purpose of allowing temporary placing bulk fuel distribution tanks on property located at 420553rd Avenue Northeast for a period of up to three months.
I'll second that.
Discussion. In favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, opportunity for public input again, application for development variance permit and development permit at 4950th Street. I believe this is where...
Do we want to make a motion, or...
I'm asking for public input, and if there is none, we will go straight to the motion. Sorry? Were you speaking to Cereris? So you confused me. I thought you were on the second. Okay, we've already passed that one, so let's carry on here. Application for Development Variance Permit and Development Permit. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that recommendation that council approve the insurance of Chetwind Petroleum Limit Development Variance Permit, application to place 10 above-ground fuel tanks at 4950th Street, and that council approve insurance of development permit 12018 for Chetwind Petroleum Limited.
I would second that.
Discussion. In favor? Opposed? Carried. Rural Dividend Fund.
I would make that recommendation that council authorize to apply for a B.C. Rural Dividend Fund grant of up to $160,000 for projects that will improve accessibility, lighting, added trails, and sidewalks within the boulevards.
I'd second that.
Do we have discussion? In favor? Oh, sure.
Are the sidewalks going to be limited to in the boulevards?
The application is specifically for trails, but we can look at the walkways along that same corridor and see if we can maximize the time when we have contractors in.
In favor? Opposed? Carried. Request for extension to Temporary Use Permit for Dave Milner.
I'll make that recommendation. You authorize notice of intent to authorize a three-year extension of temporary permit use O2 2017 to Dave Milner for the purpose of allowing temporary locations of 150-man camp, oh, 50 persons, sorry, work camp on properties located at 441444th Avenue, Chetwind, B.C., for a period of three years, and schedule and advertise a public input opportunity to be held at the September the 4th meeting for the above extension request.
Discussion. In favor? Hold your hands up. And opposed? Carried. Request for extension of Temporary Use Permit, number 032017 Black Diamond.
I'll make that authorization. Notice of intent to authorize a three-year extension of the Temporary Use Permit 032017 to Black Diamond Group for the purpose of allowing a temporary 266-person work camp on the property located at 4346th Drive Northeast, and schedule and advertise a public input opportunity on September the 4th meeting for the above extension request.
I would second that.
Discussion.
So is that our only option for three years, not just another one year?
No, you can extend it for any time limit that you want, but they can only have one more extension. Legislatively, we can't even vary that at all, it's one extension, but you can make whatever time extension that you want up to three years.
And that final vote will occur on September 4?
That's correct.
Your Worship, I was, I'm wondering if we could increase the length of time for that public hearing, because there's two different...
I'm sorry?
Can we increase the time of the meeting, the public hearing, from like, say, 3:45 to 4:30, so we don't run out of time for the public to say their piece?
Let's deal with the vote here. Any further discussion? In favor? Opposed? Carried. Now, your question was, can we give more time for the public hearing?
Yes.
Of course.
So there's more for the public to input.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Normally, we would include that opportunity for public input as we did tonight with these two applications for the TUP and the DVP, right during the regular council meeting, but we can certainly change the time of the council meeting if you'd like.
So we're not asking for a formal public hearing here, are we?
Right, no, it's not actually a public hearing, more of a public opportunity, or an input for, an opportunity for public input during the meeting.
So in essence, the end result would be the same. We'd get, council would get the information from the citizens who showed up to speak.
That's correct. Who showed up, or they can provide their comments by email or mail as well.
I've got a question in regards to that. What triggers one over the other? Like, how do we decide whether it goes to public hearing or whether it goes to public input?
Usually, the public hearings are based on a bylaw, like we did tonight. We had a public hearing for zoning amendment bylaw, and the applications for development are usually considered within a regular council meeting.
Thanks.
So occurring in the, you know, the comments occurring within the council itself, we can take as long as it takes.
Okay.
Paving requests for, quote, "results."
I'll make that motion that council award the 2018 paving contract at Peter Brothers Construction Limited at the quoted price of $332,341.72.
It's been seconded? Yes, discussion?
I have a question on that. I don't, I'm just wondering why there's such a big cap between the two of them?
Well...
Like, I don't quite understand if...
Somebody had a sharp pencil and somebody couldn't find the pencil.
Sometimes taking the cheaper one isn't always the right thing either, right? Like, as long as they're both aware of, I guess...
No, I hear you, and that's a valid comment, but Peter's Brothers is well-known to us. They paved our airport and they've done other work for us. So when Peter's Brothers come in with this quote, I'd be inclined to...
Yeah, no, I totally agree, taking the lower. I'm just curious of...
It's huge.
Why it's so different, like $166,000?
Or maybe DGS had more work than they could do.
Maybe.
References are always checked before we award contracts, right?
Yes, for these kind of contracts, references are always checked first.
But in this case, we've had experience with both.
Correct.
We know, we know, we know both contractors very well, so...
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion in favor? Opposed? Carried. Facade Improvement Program Grant Application.
I'll make that recommendation, you authorize insurance of development permit, number O2 2018, to permit facade improvements to the existing structure on the property of 480951st Avenue, and council authorize a Business Facade Improvement Program Grant Application and Partnership Agreement for 0957016 B.C. Limited, operating as Tim Horns, located at 480951st Avenue, Chetwind, B.C.
I would second that.
Any discussion? In favor? Opposed? Carried. RA8, Development Variance Permit Application, Peter and Heather Morrow.
Okay, I'll make that recommendation. Pursuant to Section 4908 of the Local Government Act, RS 2015, council of the District of Chetwind give notice that we'll be receiving an application from Peter and Heather Morrow, requesting approval of a development variance permit, application to vary the single-family residence R1 minimal principal building width of 7.0 meters to varied, to varied, to 6.09 meters wide, in the case of the proposed mobile home to be located at 410452nd Place, and that the zoning bylaw required setbacks be varied from seven meters from the front parcel line to six meters, and from nine meter to 3.5 meter from the rear parcel line, and... to three point five meter from the rear parcel line and that the public input opportunity be scheduled during the regular council meeting on September the fourth.
Okay, so we're not voting on the, we're just voting to hear this on September fourth. This doesn't give it any number of readings, does it? If I see it rightly? No. So the decision is on September fourth. In favor? Opposed? That's carried. We have R A nine. National Disaster Mitigation Program Application for Funding.
I'd make that recommendation. The council authorized administration to submit an application to the National Disaster Mitigation Program. There. For funding of structural flood mitigation measures related to flood, berm and erosion protection measures for winter, creek upstream of C N Railway Crossing to prevent diversion of floodwaters through the business district.
I'd second that.
Discussion? What's the value of this?
About three million dollars.
Sorry?
About three million dollars.
I have a question. In regards to our, the two other applica, the applications that we're talking about for creek, is that.
Debris traps?
Yes.
It's separate. We already received that grant, so the design is underway right now. This is a separate project.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
With these, with these grants, is there, is there anything that's left behind for cleanup of any debris that's in, for example, those traps we're putting in and so on? Is there, or are we just going to be taking that out of our regular budget after that?
To clean the debris traps, that would be considered maintenance. So the funding that we got is just for the construction of the debris trap. So anything that we would have to do to remove that debris would be up to us afterward.
In favor? Opposed? You've carried it. Report for information, build permit values.
A motion to receive for information?
Favor? Vote is carried. Public question, period. You may ask any question on the agenda topic. There being none, motion adjourned.
Second.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.
Okay, it's Levis Sabolski with Book Talk at Pine Tree Books, and I have Judy. And can you say your name so I don't make a mistake?
Kucherik.
Kucherik. It's a good Polish name.
Yes, it is.
Well, you know what? She's written a book called Naked Tuesday, and she does an article in The Mirror and Alaska Highway News called "The Green-Eyed Girl." Plus, she's on CBC. She's everywhere!
I try to be, yes.
She's everywhere's.
Except on Tuesdays. We don't want to do stuff on Tuesdays.
Did you actually go nude all day on Tuesday?
Well, that's, you'd have to read the book to find out.
Oh. Well, let's go back to when you started writing. When did you start writing?
I have written for years and years and years. I, I think it was, it was just something I enjoyed. So I would, you know, pen poems, or I would, I would write in a journal, you know, that kind of thing. And then I would share it with my parents, and they would laugh, and people would give me that feedback that I needed. But I didn't really start writing and submitting them anywhere until early on in my marriage. I started writing, and I wrote primarily about two characters called Eddie and Clarence, which were modeled after my father and my husband, about their escapades as they were hunting. So I started writing and submitting it to, like, Outdoor Life and places like that, so, yeah.
And you grew up in?
I was born in Fairview, and I grew up in a small town called Warsley, Alberta.
So you're a northern girl.
I am a northern girl. I am a northern farm girl.
And you mentioned a little bit earlier that you moved to Vancouver Island. What prompted that, and how did it impact your life?
Well, my father had a massive heart attack at the age of 39. And as a result of that, he had open-heart surgery. I believe it was triple bypassed. And I think at that point, he realized that the farm was a little bit more than he could, you know, handle. I think there was that mortality thing where it's like, maybe I'm not going to make it, maybe I'm not going to live for too many years. So we sold the farm. And he sold his business, which was water truck hauling, and sold his plane. He was a private pilot as well. And we uprooted and moved down to Vancouver Island. And let me tell you, it was a hard transition for this, this farm girl. I was 13 years old at the time, so it was really difficult, very difficult.
And did you miss home?
I did miss home. I'm a, I'm an extrovert, if you can. It's easy to tell, but, and so I love people and I love new experiences. But to realize that I was a 13-year-old girl who had lived on a farm all my life, I think I mentioned earlier, you know, you don't, you know, haircuts were done by the neighbor. You know, you played in fields, you snowmobiled, you did all those kinds of things, and you were very isolated and very protected. And so then, moving to Vancouver Island, where they had, I mean, I know this sounds ridiculous, but all the roads were paved. And, and the school was huge. And I was now a very small fish in a very big pond, whereas when I was in school in Warsley, I was a much larger fish in a very small pond.
And when did you start writing? Did you start writing in Vancouver Island?
Uh, no, I didn't. I think during my time living on Vancouver Island, I really struggled to try to meet these new expectations of living where I was living. I wasn't used to a lot of the way of life there. I, you know, I, I struggled with how to fit in. And as a result, I, I became very, very, very depressed. And I talk about it, I speak to it in my TED Talk, our TEDx Talk that I did last year. But I actually, at the age of 14, had an unsuccessful suicide attempt. And so I think at that point, it was very evident that I was struggling.
What pulled you out of this?
What pulled me out of it? Well, I don't think you're ever totally pulled out of that type of thinking. I think people who suffer from depression deal with it all throughout their lives and have to battle the ups and downs. But we did move. We moved, and we moved to Dawson Creek when I was in grade 11. And I was much closer to that bosom of reality that I was so comfortable with. And, and it was good for me.
Excellent. And it's kind of interesting because just the weather in the island sometimes gets to you, too.
Yeah, for my father, the weather got to him. He hated the rain, you know, missed the Peace Country sunshine. You can't ever get enough of the huge skies. And down there, it's a little different. I did love the weather. I loved everything about when I smell cedar trees, when we get, we're going on holidays and I smell it, I, I feel nostalgic. But, but it just wasn't, it wasn't a good fit for me. And as, it wasn't a good fit for my father either because it drove him stir-crazy, and he ended up, you know, realizing he wasn't going to die. And he got a job working in the oil field, so...
So in Dawson Creek, you started your penmanship?
Yeah, and it was still for the, for a time. I think I wrote, but I didn't write with purpose. You know, I dabbled, I...
You like humor?
Yeah, I love, yeah. I like, I like sarcasm. I like, I like when people don't think, take things too seriously. And, and I think I like to take dark subjects and make them humorous as well, or subjects where people are struggling with something, whether it be aging, or parenting, or relationships, and make them humorous, yeah.
Do you have any characters that you bring up?
No, no.
Do you have lots of them?
I, I don't have characters. Now, I write from, write from, it's about me, and it's about...
So you are the character?
I am the character. And my husband, Bob, is also a character in it as well, as much as he may not enjoy that. He does, he doesn't mind. But I got away from this Eddie and Clarence stuff that I was writing, and I realized that I could put my own name on things that I write. Still very hesitant about what I was sharing necessarily, not quite knowing who my audience was at that point, but still, I didn't have characters anymore. I became that character.
Excellent. So it's humor writing? And do you do that on CBC? I haven't heard it for a while. Every two weeks, right?
Every two weeks, yeah.
And is there a set date?
Yeah, at 7:40 on Thursdays, yeah.
In the morning?
Yeah, so not tomorrow, or not, is it Thursday today? Yeah, ooh, so it's next week, yeah, next week, yeah.
Okay, and so the topics you pull from Dawson Creek and yourself?
Well, what I do is I, I speak to relatable topics that would be relatable to top, to people in the Peace region, or try to draw a correlation there. You know, because we're unique, we're different, we're...
What makes us different? Tell us a little bit about that.
I think that our, our work ethic makes us different.
Do you think we work harder?
I think we, ooh, I think we do. I think we do. We work differently. Let's put it that way. We work differently. You know, I speak to the fact that, you know, my husband and my son are both in the oil field, and, and they're gas operators. And, you know, they are working at 35 below, and they are up and out of the house and, and gone, as are many individuals in this area. So I think we work really hard. You know, we have truck drivers who are on the roads in inclement weather. We have farmers who are, you know, working so, so very hard, too. And so I do, I think we work differently, not to diminish anything else, but I do.
Something that I'm just wondering about, and I'd really like your opinion, do you think that some of the people that are in service industries and farmers have a resentment towards pipeliners and oil and gas people because of the salary? What, what do you think of that?
A resentment?
Or jealousy?
I don't know. I don't think so. When you speak to a farmer, as my father was a farmer, he said, I remember him joking, saying, "Give me a million dollars. If I won the lottery, I would just farm it until it was gone." It's, farming is in their blood. They love it. I don't think that you, although you have to be able to survive at farming, I do think that there's a passion for it. And, and farmers are unique individuals, and they, they, they have a different, they have a very different value system. And it's, it's all about that home life.
So in the big picture of things, I'm just wondering, would you, are you going to continue living in Dawson Creek and writing?
Yes, I think so. Like, my husband, born and raised in Dawson Creek. We have a daughter in Edmonton, and our son lives in Dawson Creek as well. And my parents live there, and my siblings have all moved back there. So I'm surrounded by family and friends. And, you know, the thing about it is, at the end of the day, I know that I can come home to this very, the warm, loving arms of the Peace Country. I, I can. And I can go away, I can, I can go on holidays, I can go speaking engagements and that kind of thing. But at the end of the day, I can come home to this place that I do call home.
Excellent. Now, are you planning on a second book?
Yes, yes, I am. I am. And actually, the, it was funny because I was going to write about my experience working for an airline, because I worked for a regional airline for eight years. And I thought, oh, there were so many stories that I could tell. But it, you know, when I took pen to paper or fingers to keyboard, it didn't, it didn't come out that way. It came out with a continuation of the type of stories that I was writing in Naked Tuesday.
Yeah, so how far along are you on your second book?
I'm almost done. I'm almost done. I just need to not procrastinate and just get it finished and get it into editing.
Could you tell us the name of the new book?
That's what's killing me, is that I need, I, I have been struggling with a name, like, with a really great name. You know, Naked Tuesday was and is, I think, a great title for a book. But I want my next book to have that same, because it does have the same flavor. I want it to be as, I don't know, as kind of perky and, and not naughty, because I'm not a naughty person. Sassy! I want it to be sassy.
Yeah. Whose is written for specifically? Do you have an audience that you could say, "You have to read this book or you're crazy"?
Well, I have found that wives have read it to their husbands on road trips and, and that kind of thing, and they've loved it. I think my demographic, so like I said, I'm 52 right now, but I've found that everybody from the age of 30 to 65 finds it relatable because I do, I don't pull any punches. I tell you exactly how it is. You know, if I fall down, I tell you how I felt that I fell down, how it happened, you know, how funny it was. And, you know, I, I try to be relatable. I'm real.
Well, it's really proud that a Dawson Creek person now has written it. What's the response from the general audience that have read it?
Really, really positive. I, I, I get tweets from people who, you know, I remember somebody said, said to me, "It's pee-my-pants funny." I don't know if I'm allowed to say pee-my-pants, but pee-my-pants funny. And, and it really, it, it's been very, I think, humbling, you know? Because you don't think, when you write something, that it's going to be that, that it's going to have that kind of response. So it's been really humbling.
Who would you compare your writing style to?
Oh, well, some of my favorite authors are people like Jen Lancaster. She wrote a book called Bitters, A New Black. The blogues, Jenny Lawson. I think I really enjoy her writing as well. Sia Sunrise Pearson, I don't, she's a phenomenal writer, and I love the way that she tells her stories. So those are, would I compare myself to them? No. I mean, they're, they're amazing authors, but I do, I do pull from, from, you know, I'm influenced by them greatly, yeah.
Good. So what's going to happen today is you're going to be leaving some books at Pine Tree Books.
Yes, I am.
And we're going to be having a major, major book show. And I may invite you to come in and do a little reading of your favorite, favorite spot, and we'd like to highlight your new book right from the start. Maybe we can beat CBC.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Judy.
Thanks.
Well, I don't know as it is, really a band, but we just get together and play together. So anytime when people would come over to visit, we would just pull out the instruments and start playing. Dad would be on the fiddle, Joanne Levine, Joanne on the piano, Levine on the guitar. I was usually pretty small then. So anyway, Clem, he learned to play the piano, and, well, he plays lots of things. Yeah, no, whenever we get together, it's just always been music. There's nothing like music. Life wouldn't be the same without music.